Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
We're not on.
We're not on?
Jim? Can you do that? We have magic ones or something? Maybe not.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who has the dog? Good morning. Welcome to the September 6, 2007, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kowalski.
She's gonna take me for a walk. Oh, yeah. She's a strong one. Come here, baby. Come here. Come here. Maybe a cookie? Morning, everybody. Today, we have a stray female mix at our Lorraine County Dog Kennel. She will be available Saturday after 3 o'clock if you want to come down and pick her up. If not, we have plenty of dogs to choose from. And don't forget, we also have a website that you can look at the dogs online if you don't want to take a trip out to our kennel. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Twining is going to introduce Mr. Ulick, which is the Director of Lorraine County Community Development Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am pleased and really delighted to introduce my replacement, the new Lorraine County Community Development Director that you've hired about three weeks ago. He's Bill Ulick. He's very familiar with Lorraine County and also many of the state programs that we get through the Department of Development. So, I'm asking Bill to come up now and address the Commissioners.
Thank you. It's a hard act to follow. The dog, not Ron.
Oh, that's good.
I want to thank the Board of Commissioners, and Mr. Cordez, and Mr. Twining also. Everyone's-- I've been here a few days now, and it's been very hectic. I'm very impressed by a lot of the activity that's been going on. As Ron said, I have a lot of familiarity. I started my career out about twenty-some years ago with the Ohio Department of Development. And one of the areas that I represented, as a field representative for those programs, was Lorraine County. So, I do have some familiarity with the area and some experience. Hopefully, I can use all of that knowledge to help the county even more. I pledge to you and the citizens of Lorraine County, I'll do my best to create some healthy communities and enforce or encourage more economic development and job creation for those residents. I look forward to working with all of you. And I have to say that everyone I've met so far has welcomed me with open arms, and I'm just delighted to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. You've got big shoes to fill with Mr. Twining. We're counting on you to get a lot of work done.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Madam Clerk?
We're gonna do a proclamation proclaiming September as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month.
Ms. Jorgas?
Good morning, Elaine.
Good morning, Elaine.
Good morning. My name is Elaine Jorgas, G-E-O-R-G-A-S. I'm the Director of the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorraine County. And September is a national event. It's National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. And it's a time that we, as citizens, the county, can recognize that we need to raise the voice of awareness that treatment works and people recover. When we do that, we save money. Employers save money by having healthy employees. Families save their families when people recover, and we do save lives. So, I want to thank you. We do have our stellar event. September 15, which is a Saturday morning, we have our 5K Run Walk. It's at the Days Dam Pavilion of the Lorraine County Metro Parks. It's an official race, so if you're a runner that charts your courses, you can get your recognition for that. We'll have kids events and just a day that we do recognize that treatment works and people recover. So, I want to thank you for taking notice and observation of this month on behalf of the citizens of our county.
Thank you. Proclamation in matter proclaiming September 2007 as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Lorraine County, whereas 22.2 million people in the United States have faced a substance abuse disorder in the past year and all deserve to experience many benefits of recovery. And whereas treatment reduces reported job problems, including incomplete work and absenteeism, by an average of 75 percent. Whereas treatment is cost-effective, with some measurements showing a benefit-to-cost ratio of up to 7 to 1, with substance use disorder treatment costing $1,583 per person on average and having a monetary benefit to society of nearly $11,487 per each person treated. And whereas we must recognize the financial savings associated with treatment services and ensure that such services are readily available to those who need assistance. And whereas costs and insurance present obstacles to those who need access to treatment facilities and want to reestablish their place in community. And whereas to help achieve this goal, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorraine County, and its partners invite all residents of Lorraine County to participate in National Alcohol and Drug Addiction and Mental Illness Recovery Month. Now, therefore, by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in us by laws of Lorraine County, we do hereby proclaim the month of September 2007 as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Lorraine County and call upon the people of Lorraine County, Ohio, to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting this year's theme. Join the Voices for Recovery, Saving Lives, Saving Dollars. Witness our signatures, Board of Commissioners, Ted Kelo, Betty Blair, and Laurie Kowalski.
Thank you again.
Commissioner Blair is gonna present the next proclamation.
Are we gonna let the emergency management person to say something? He looks pretty nice this morning. All da-da-da. Well, because you look distinguished, Tom.
Doesn't he every day, though?
Well, he looks working every day.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Kelly.
You're about to pass a proclamation for National Preparedness Month. It's our attempt to, again, tell people that they need to prepare on an individual and family level, especially if I'm on vacation. Yeah. I leave on vacation on August 6. We're in a drought, and by Tuesday morning, we're rolling up the streets of Lorraine. So, that happens every time. But in the event that we have a large-scale emergency, it may take some time for the local emergency responders to get into your area to help you out. So, you need to be prepared in advance. And that's hopefully what we're gonna do with this resolution and tell people they need to do that.
It says in the matter declaring September 7th-- excuse me, September 2007 as National Preparedness Month in Lorraine County, Ohio. Whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security has declared September as National Preparedness Month, a nationwide effort held to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and schools. And whereas the goal of National Preparedness Month is to increase public awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies and encourage individuals to take action. And whereas families across America need to create a family disaster plan so that each person knows what to do, where to go, and how to contact loved ones. And whereas September 2007, National Preparedness Month, will provide Americans with a variety of opportunities to learn more about preparing for emergencies, including natural disasters and potential terrorist threats. And whereas National Preparedness Month brings together an amazing coalition of partners to make citizens' preparedness a priority for every city, every neighborhood, and every home across America. Homeland Security is a shared responsibility. This month will provide Americans with a variety of opportunities to learn more about ways they can prepare for an emergency, get an emergency supply kit, establish a family communications plan, and become better aware of threats that may impact communities. It will also provide them with several opportunities to volunteer or get first aid or CPR training. And whereas this month will also symbolize an opportunity to pay tribute to America's first responders who put themselves at risk for the safety of their fellow citizens, these brave police officers, firefighters, and emergency service personnel exemplify the compassion and commitment that helps strengthen our country. We will be forever grateful for their service and sacrifice. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners hereby joins in declaring the month of September as National Preparedness Month in Lorraine County, Ohio, and urges all residents of Lorraine County to learn how to be ready for the unexpected. It's time by your three Commissioners, Ted Kelo, Betty Blair, and Laurie Kowalski.
You do a great job.
Thank you.
I think you like driving around in that bus.
It needs washing.
It needs washing.
You could take the dog home.
Madam Clerk?
There are no job and family services bills and investments?
So moved.
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions.
We don't have an administrator right now?
I sent him on in Aaron. You'll have to hold that until he comes back.
I'll bet he's gonna ask for an executive session.
I'm sure. Let's get through this before he gets back.
Authorize various payments in the amount of $1,000 for services rendered in connection with the indigent veterans in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5901.26, one butler and son funeral service in North Railton for Hugh Robert Galloway, and then two riddle funeral home vermillion for Rosemary V. Cross.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Receive and generalize regular annexation of 9.9923 acres from New Rush Township to the City of Overland Kendall at Overland. An Ohio corporation not-for-profit by Barbara W. Thomas, CEO. The agent is John Keys Walker, and the public hearing will be on November 1, 2007, at 10:00 a.m., which is the 63rd day.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Community Development, amend Resolution 04214 adopted March 25, 2004, appointing five members to a variance board pursuant to Section 4.5.1 of Resolution 91417, the Special Purpose Flood Damage Prevention Resolution. Said amendments to reflect these five seats will be designated to the department heads and/or designee rather than individual members since it does not mean on a regular basis, and the terms have expired.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Under Sanitary Engineer, authorize Lorraine County Auditor to levy additional assessments for waterline maintenance improvement against all property within various county sewer districts for the tax-dupkly year 2007 collectible in 2008 in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 6103.15.
Mr. Carney?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to excuse myself from this discussion since our legal counsel advised that I might have a possible conflict of interest since I live there.
Okay, see ya.
You don't have to leave.
Bring him back with you.
No, I'm gonna get caught.
Okay.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Carney.
The subject came up last week in the presentation of the renewal of the assessments and the appropriate deadlines being September 10. And subsequently, I was requested to bring forth some additional information on our available options other than assessment. And I took upon myself over the weekend to bring forth a number of options. And that report was given to you dated September 1. A letter to Mr. Cordez. And if I may read, it's-- I please find enclosed a review of the waterline revenue to support the operation, maintenance, and repair-- the O-M-N-R, by the way-- and repair of various waterlines located within Lorraine County. This review includes additional water income scenarios and updates to a previous correspondence, which I did in 2005. I'd like to discuss with you the addition of a 25% surcharge on Illyria's water rate with the total removal of all assessment. And I was available, and Mr. Cordez and I discussed this. And Attorney Sarason and I also discussed this concept. I had an opportunity to discuss this same situation with the Utilities Director, Superintendent of Utilities, Tom Brand, from Illyria. I'm sorry?
It's got a microphone on, Jim.
Is this on?
Oh, yeah, it is, but I don't know. You need to get closer. Maybe you're too tall?
It's the first time anyone asked me to speak up. Maybe it's speak softer. The-- And subsequently, I spoke to the individuals, Mr. Cordez, Mr. Sarason, Tom Brand, the Superintendent of Utilities with the City of Illyria. This is available to us for a surcharge of the waterline. This is where I say it's black and white. The users will pay the maintenance. The non-users do not pay maintenance. And it's kind of a more equitable situation. And in your correspondence, you might see that that was my option number three of the six options I presented. The income would be in the neighborhood of $2,000 less than what we received this year. But that's fine. We can live with that. And the charge would be on their water bill with Illyria's using the same billing situation because they do the same billing. The water source is Illyria. So, I'm asking at this time if you agree with my suggestion to not approve the assessment and permit me to start proceedings to enter into a contract with the help of your prosecutor's office and the city solicitors of Illyria to have a contract presented to the City Council of Illyria for approval, subsequent approval to you. And once in that area-- four months, give or take one or two-- it would be finalized, and the billing process would be accomplished. What I'm saying is you probably-- the residents probably will not see any billing in the first quarter or even possibly the second quarter of 2008. But historically, with the consumption rates that I see, 5,000 gallons per month, we see an average of approximately $40 per year.
Mr. Sarason, any comments? You're our legal counsel, but Mr. Ennis on vacation.
I found out about this about 1:30 yesterday afternoon. Finally got a copy of it. The proposal by the Engineers' Office would, I believe, have to be presented to the City of Illyria. They would have to change or reconfigure their computer program, which would take about six months. And, you know, I just want the Commissioners to be aware that this is a radical change in the impact of the maintenance fees for waterlines. Essentially, what you're doing is taking away the assessment-- the assessment model, which was embodied in Revised Code Section 6103.15, which is what you were discussing last week, and putting in a surcharge, which, again, will impact only the people who live there and use water. There's two ways you can go. If you go with the surcharge, you can go on a flat fee basis or on a percentage based upon usage. I also have some reservations about switching to a surcharge without some kind of public hearing because it appears to me that that would be a rate increase. The question that I can't answer for you today-- and believe me, I've tried to sort it out-- is whether you are permitted to take five districts and aggregate them for the surcharge, whereas presently, they are divided up into distinct units for the assessments. I looked, but I just wasn't able to come up with an answer. However, I do know that this will be viewed as a rate increase. And I would recommend to the Board that if they intend to do this, that they should have some kind of public hearings to allow people to express their opinion as to the different impact that this would have on the way they get billed because the amount's going to be the same. It's just going to be billed differently and for a lot of reasons. I think that there are-- you know, there are some repercussions that should be examined, not the least of which is how you justify this 25% surcharge in terms of past waterline maintenance costs and future waterline maintenance costs. Because if you-- if you know anything about utility laws, you know that rates have to be set on a reasonable basis. And if there's-- if there have been a lot of one-time expenses that you don't anticipate in the future, say, for example, last year when Illyria increased its water pressure and blew out a lot of, you know, water pipes, then maybe the 25% is higher than it need to be. But in any case, those are just my considerations. And I think that an abrupt change like this should be studied.
Well, we don't really have an option. I think we should go forward with the surcharge, not specifically the 25%, but some other type of agreement with the City of Illyria so that it's fair and equitable among all the residents that are using the waterlines. Some people now are paying, you know, 50. Some people are paying 300. And I don't believe that's fair. I don't want to go forward with the assessments as they were given to us last week. So, I-- this is probably our only other alternative. And if we have to have public hearings, then we have public hearings.
Generally, well-- once again, I was caught late with this, but I believe that if you're going to certify assessments, this is the last week to do it.
And I'm not prepared to certify assessments as they were given to us last week because I don't believe they're fair or equitable.
Okay.
Mr. Sarason, what's the process? Does Mr. Carney go into negotiations with the City of Illyria first to work out what the surcharge will be and how it's handled? And then we call for public hearings within each of the districts? Or they all bundle together as one public hearing for all of them to speak? Or do you need to look into it farther? Has also-- or Commissioner Kowalski's moved to go towards a surcharge?
I called, you know, I called the City of Illyria, too. It's not really a big problem as far as they're concerned. They just have to change their program somewhat. But you need to make some decisions, and you should probably have some kind of hearings on those where you look into, you know, what it costs in the past, what it costs in the future, what the appropriate rate will be. They have no problem changing it. They would enter it onto the bill as a separate line item so that the people that receive the bills will know that that's what-- you know, where it comes from. However, you know, you're going to need to know exactly, you know-- again, whether to proceed on a flat-dollar basis per user or tie it to usage. There are advantages and disadvantages to both. And then decide exactly what percentage is, you know, is appropriate. Because we're talking about, you know, future revenues. And we have to decide that very important question, whether you have to set the rates by district because these came in in different districts. You know, I mean, they came in District 53, 55, 56, 58, and 59, and they're all different. It's not as if each one shows the same maintenance history. Some are newer, some of them are older. So, you might want to address that. So, I believe you should schedule for more hearings and get some more data from the Engineers' Office before you make a decision on that.
We'll look at the legal end of it, though. Is that the county prosecutor's job, then, yourself or Mr. Ennis, to see what is legal and proper and what we're allowed to do if they're bundled together or separate?
Certainly.
Were you guys working with them?
Yes.
Mr. Carney to put this together?
Yes, we would.
Do you want to pull this off the agenda, then?
Yes. Well, yeah. Do you want to talk about this? Mr. Carney did provide us--
You have a motion to deny this, then? A motion to just--
Motion to deny the assessment?
That can go downstairs because I still have--
And I'll second that. I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
I do have a report showing the costs with me for the last five years and incrementally on each break. But I can-- and I can bring that to Mr. Sarason's attention this morning. And I can go back quite a few years back to augment that if--
This will be what you need to prove, whether it's 25% or 10% or whatever needs to be charged for a surcharge. It just seems to make more sense that it's a surcharge now, especially since the original assessment that the people are paying-- they've already paid off the original construction of the waterline. So, really, it should just be a maintenance surcharge rather than an actual assessment. So, I think the surcharge idea is good. It's fair. And we just need to find out how much that should be.
That's fine. You can see our numbers. Our average cost for each break per year for the last five years, $74,000. Our average income is $66,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
I'll bring that to Mr. Scott Sarason's attention right after the meeting. Thank you.
Come on down, Betty. Like the Price is Right. Madam Clerk?
Under EMA, Homeland Security approved an interim agreement with L. Robert Kimball and Associates in the amount not to exceed $48,989 for a communication system and interoperable strategic planning implementation support.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Mr. Kelly?
Just briefly, over the past five years, we've been receiving Homeland Security grant dollars. The committee that's made up of about 12 people are mandated. The number-one mandate we have in that to spend the money is communications interoperability. I think we made a pretty good stab at that over the last five years. The committee felt that we needed someone on the outside that's not affiliated with a radio manufacturer or a local installer to come in and take a look at what we've done so far and make recommendations of what we can do with what we have and possibly the next five years if the money continues. We haven't received an 80% reduction in our Homeland grant over the last five years from when we first started. So, the dollars are getting scarce. We want to make sure that we become the most cost-effective and do what we can with what we have.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Under MRDD, proof change order number 1 through 6 for Sites Builders, Inc. in the amount of $21,990 for the construction to the services and support building for MRDD relating to foundation, footing, excavations to be paid for the MRDD construction account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, can I?
Do you want to go back to number nine?
Well, I'll ask for it now if you--
Okay.
I do have one personnel action that I need to talk to you about concerning our telecommunications department. So, I request an executive session specifically to discuss that. And I'm looking in the folder, and I have a pending legal matter that I need to discuss with the Board also. Both permissible issues under the sunshine law?
Thank you.
Mr. Sarason, Assistant High Prosecutor?
I have no report.
Commissioners' report.
Well, first, I want to say that Labor Fest this year was spectacular. I loved it down at the Black River Landing, and I hope they keep having it down there. It was really nice. Great crowd. Standing up on stage with Strickland and Sutton and Sherrod Brown. It was awesome. And I'll tell you what, when one of them had mentioned the war, I didn't see a dry eye out in the crowd. Everybody was wiping their eyes. It was very, very moving. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of going to Cleveland and meeting with Mayor Frank Jackson for about an hour and a half. I'll tell you, what a humble, really, really nice guy.
I'll tell you, what a humble, really, really nice guy, not like what's portrayed on, on the news and stuff. He's really, really a good guy, we talked about regionalism, we talked about the I-90 interchange, and just kind of got a chance to know him and meet him, and that building is phenomenal. I've never seen such a beautiful building. I asked Dennis Schauer to come in today, I've got a, we had a Gergli Maintenance King come in a few weeks ago regarding supplying the county with various items. We used to, we used to have our local vendors do a lot of our, our business, and this year so far, it was like 516, and I remember when he was here a few weeks ago, it might have been a couple months ago, actually, he had said that when he would do a bid, they would take the bid and negotiate it, which Jim said was a legal thing to do, but then they wouldn't come back to him and, and tell him what the, how he got outbid, and if he wanted to, to reduce his bid. Just wondering, there, there's like such discrepancy on how much money is being spent by certain vendors, and I want to know why we're not using local vendors. And this Expideks that we've spent $26,000 on out of Cleveland, I've never seen Expideks whiteback or anything come past my desk, so how are we spending all this money on this guy, and I'm not seeing that? If you could answer that for me, and why we're not using local vendors, if you can come up?
Commissioners, lore, I mean, when we went out for, he quotes, Expideks was the cheapest at the time. They do our paper for office services, and they come in, they showed us everything, and Larry, the supervisor, who, he goes out and gets these bids, and they were by far the cheapest at the time. And now that they are Gergli and Molk isn't getting as much business, they've now lowered their price. I just had a good hour and a half meeting yesterday with Molk, who lowered their prices, and now Molk is going to get a nice share of the business again, because-
According to Gergli, he's saying that he's not even afforded the opportunity to bid?
That, they just got all the, they just got all the trashcan liners.
Are we sending all of our items out to bid?
Yes. As far as bid, I'm not sure what you're talking about. Bid at the beginning of the year for bid for the whole year?
How, how is it that I don't see Expideks-
We do it every month.
-come through, and we've spent 20, almost $27,000 with them?
I have, we have a, we have a purchase order with them.
A blanket PO?
Yes, no, not a blanket, a requisition.
How mu, how much is that?
Well, we do it every quarter, we do it every quarter. It depends, I mean, if we, we, I'm not sure what you're, what you're asking, I mean, we do it, we do a requisition every quarter for with them. And every, every, I don't know how often he does it now, I can't, I can't honestly tell you. But Larry goes out and gets the bids, he brings them to me, we look at them, and then we go from there. I mean, the cost is, as far as what we are spending now, opposed to what we were spending a couple years ago, is drastically less now than what it was then. It's, it's about, you know, you guys only give us so much dollars to work with, and we work within those nu, those, those numbers. It's not a, a matter of going out and giving it to somebody just because they're, I want to do as much business with a local vendor as possible, but-
Doesn't look like it by these numbers.
Well, I mean, but if you go by the, if you go by all the numbers and see how much less we're spending now than we were two years ago-
That's because you're taking a bid from, say, Gergli, and you're giving it to Expideks, and they're beating that bid, and you're not going back to Gergli and saying, can you outbid?
I did the same thing with, with, with Molk just the other day. Molk, I gave him all the prices, so they can, so they can do it. So now, now that Molk knows them, he can, he lowered his prices. This is all tax dollars monies we're, we're spending here, and, and you got to get the best bang for your buck here.
Well, I, I agree with you there, I'm just wondering if we're doing it properly or improperly.
No, I think we're doing it properly.
I'd like to have Yvonne Newton come up, I know she's been getting a lot of calls from these vendors, if you can kind of shed some light on this for me.
Yvonne Newton, purchasing director for Lorraine County Commissioners. You're right, I do, used to do the bids for our department, the Commissioners, I need to commission the Sheriff Department, Golden Acres, Job and Family Services, and CBCF. For the past two years, I have not did it for the Commissioners. What I do is, I do a public bid. It goes out, anyone, whoever wants to bid on it, bids on it, we get the bids back, I do a recap, send them to those departments, so that they can take a look at those bids. It's their decision if they want to go with whoever they want to go with. If it's a Cogahoga vendor, the county gets, they still, our local vendors still get 3%. We put that local preference in, in 2001. Now, the costs that I have been receiving, I got the call saying that they don't get an opportunity to quote, and that's basically what it is, quoting. I didn't know what to tell them. I don't handle our bids, so I really didn't know what to tell them, but to say, you know, you need to talk to the Commissioners, or you need to talk to Dennis Schauer, because I don't get that opportunity to do our, our bid, like I used to. That is not a-
Who took that job away from you?
Dennis doesn't give me his stuff. I've asked for it in 2005 when he first came, because what I do is, in October, I prepare to do the bids, I ask them, those departments, what do they use, how much they use, and if it's comparable, then I go ahead and put it together, and I send it out. If there are samples that they request, I request the samples, so that these departments can get an opportunity to use those samples, and see if that's what they want. If they don't u, if they don't want that, then they go with the, what they actually used in the past. So I don't do that, and when we get that big bid, it's not just for the Commissioners, it's for four other departments, five other departments, that we split that bid out on. We get good pricing. They sharp, the local vendors have known, they sharpen their pencils to do this. You, you, you have competition. And really, I don't care who gets the bid, whoever's giving us the best price is going to get that bid, and that bid stays in place for a year. If those products go lower, they pass that price on to us. If they go higher, then I bring it back to the board and say, look, they want to raise the price, it's up to the Commissioners if they want to take that price higher. But usually, we don't even pass that, and it's like, look, you bid it on this, this is what we're getting, if it go lower, they pass the lower price on to us. That's the way it's been done since I've been doing it in the past 20 something years.
Okay, my, another question I have is, how, how have we spent this much money, and the Commissioners haven't seen anything across our desk?
Requisitions come through for Expidek, and then you guys approve them, and they go into a purchase order.
Mr. Cortez, can you explain to me why Yvonne is not having any contact or control with our purchasing and maintenance?
I cannot, I, I don't know about control, but each department responds differently to the way they want to handle the, the purchasing matters with regard to consumable supplies. So I, I'm not aware of which way they're going in the maintenance department right now. I do know that there's been negotiations to lower prices. How much they've been lowered, and how that is being done, I'm not completely aware of. And I normally, even when Yvonne was doing it, I'm normally not, and I think she'll-
Right. I could vouch to that, because, you know, like I said, we have local preference in there.
I pretty much get the information that you get, but I usually peruse it before it comes to the board, and I, I haven't noticed any, any, anything peculiar about it, but how they arrive at the prices, I was unaware of. I will tell you at this point, that I've met with a company twice now, and I'm going to be recommending to the Board of Commissioners that we go to a reverse auction type of purchasing, where we post these large purchases. And Yvonne, you've been up through the association on this-
Exactly.
Where we'll post on the, on their internet site, I'll use an example that we need, 10,000 trashcan liners. And we'll put that out there, and then all the vendors, and we'll make sure all the local vendors and everybody else is aware, they'll keep bidding down the price, rather than just getting one bid. So they'll, they'll negotiate against each other. Once we go to that type of system, and a few counties have already, they've seen quite a bit of savings.
Significant.
Significant is a good word.
We've been talking about that for about six months.
Right, so I'm just looking for an opportunity right now to take a couple test cases, and we usually do some big bidding at the end-
Exactly, at the end of the year, right, about now.
Right, so I was going to get with Yvonne and the board in, in the next month or two, and indicate that we should take a couple of those bids, run them through the reverse bidding process, and see how it works for us. The, so far, other county administrators have indicated to me about 22% savings over what they were paying before. That will take some of the uncertainty out of the process, because then everybody will be able to log on-
Exactly.
-and be able to-
And close, and be the same.
And what they do is, we don't, we don't bid, we don't negotiate with them, they actually bid against each other.
They bid against each other.
They can go in at any time, look at the price, and decide if they want to cut the margin on the price. And we can also incorporate our local preference into that online.
Exactly.
So this will take away that uncertainty, I believe, but I, I can't give you a more complete detailed answer, because usually the departments are responsible at their level for either using the purchasing department to work with them on negotiating a price, or bringing the materials to them afterwards. And there are other departments that do their own, too.
With our janitorial, toilet tissue and stuff, Jim, I've always done them.
I know you have, I just-
Oh, yeah, but with other different items, yeah, with other different items, yeah, they, they basically, unless they solicit my help, then I will help them out to get better pricing, but-
Yeah, I was just talking in generalities, not specifics.
Yeah, so, but like I said, it's always been a sealed bid in the past, and whatever's open, we open them up, I recap them, give them to the departments, let them see the pricing that came in from all the vendors, and we go from there. If they want samples, I call the vendors up, get the samples and so forth.
I will suggest that sealed bid is not always the least costly bidding method.
I was going there next.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was going there next.
I, you know, the sealed bid process is there to prevent favored nation status, so to speak. It's not really there to get the best price. It's a misnomer to believe that sealed bidding would give you the best price. It normally does not achieve what a negotiated process could. Again, I can't speak to what's going on in the maintenance department right now, but I don't like the sealed bid process at all. And anytime we can avoid a sealed bid process and do direct negotiations, we've been able to achieve better, better success. And Yvonne's done a lot of negotiation over the years, we're still-
Yeah, I have.
It, we, it's taken out of our hands, though, when we go to the sealed bid.
Well, Yvonne, can you do me a favor, then?
Uh-huh.
Tell us what we did prior to Mr. Schauer taking over the bid process.
I sure will.
What we spent in maintenance and janitorial products, and then if Dennis can tell us what he's spent since.
Okay.
We can see if we have a cost savings or not.
I sure will.
That'll be good.
Keep in mind, though, it's for five different departments-
Right.
-when you do that. I'll, I'll give you the pricing that our departments, I mean, I say our, the maintenance department, done in the past.
Are we still applying our local preference even when it comes back?
I do when I do the bids. It's, it's in, Jim, it's in the resolution, and the paperwork is in the bid specs, and each vendor knows that that 3% is applied to our local vendors.
And all local vendors still can't compete with 3%?
I, I don't, I can't-
You would think, especially, I mean-
I can't answer that.
Expideks is in Cleveland, they have to ship, they have shipping charges, Molk Sales is, they could probably throw it across the street, and they've only spent $85 with us this whole year.
Well, I'm sure we'd have to look at what the bottom line pricing is, location-
$85?
$85.
That's what I looked in the system, I mean, they had me, Molk Sales wanted to know when he, when, when they called me a week or so ago, and the guy was like, just outrageous. And, you know, I was like, Gary, I don't even know what to take, well, I want to know what's been spent, and if I have to go to the auditor's office, I will. I said, let me look in the system, and I'll get back with you. And basically, that's what I did. I looked underneath our account number for what our maintenance department used, and that's, that's what I got. And it's not only Molk Sales, it's Gergli, and it's Parker Brothers, and they're local here, too. So it's like three different local vendors that I was getting, you know, I tried to put them off, and it was like I couldn't put them off anymore, so it was like the last time, they was like, well, we're going to the newspaper store, I was like, okay, let me just get with the Commissioners, let them know what's going on before you do anything, and give them opportunity.
And you did send us a letter with that information.
And I did send you a letter.
You got the email on it.
So that you, you are aware of what was going on. I just didn't want to, you know, not do anything about the situation, so I just decided to send the memo to the-
Well, Mr. Gergli, he came here, and he's been calling me, and I spoke with him, and that's why, and I called you yesterday-
Right.
-and talked about it, so just wanted everybody to be aware, and I think we should be trying to do our best to use local vendors.
As long as they're competitive, Commissioner.
And not make them give us their product to, just to keep their foot in the door. That's all. Oh, I do have, that's all for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything more specific on that, that you want to look at, Commissioner? I think Commissioner Kayle asked for some information, do you need some?
Right, the information.
I'll get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The last thing, I had asked for about, I don't know, five weeks ago, for the report on the Cooks Building at Job and Family Services, and I got this as my report, which is absolutely nothing.
I've had-
There was no report, there's no report that I've been waiting for that I finally got. I did call Tom Kelly, I see he left, just to see if he's got any kind of device that would do an air quality sampling. He does not. I did call a company that he recommended called Chemtron, it's over in Avon. I didn't have an opportunity to speak to anybody, I got somebody's voicemail, so I'd like the Commissioners to authorize, and I don't know how much it's going to cost or anything, but at least discuss having somebody go over there and do an air quality test, because nothing like, I asked for, you know, top to bottom inspection, I wanted that report you said you had, I got nothing.
Well, I-
We need to at least check the air quality in that building to make sure that something over there mold or something is not making our people sick.
I, I didn't, I didn't indicate that I had a report, I said I indicated that there was, there was work done there. The UAW brought their industrial hygienist down from Detroit, and there was a group of two or three of them, and they, they did inspect the building and walk through the building. My understanding, as I related to you, was that there was a report done.
There was.
And I, I've been trying to get it-
Obviously.
Just so you know, I've been working on trying to get you as much information as out there. I was a little disturbed, and I told you a week or two ago that I wasn't getting the information I thought was available out there, and I was still looking for it, because you asked me for it. So it wasn't in my files. I had, I went back to Job and Family Services, and I looked through project management, and I, I looked in our safety office, trying to figure out what was done at the time. I do, I definitely know the UAW was here, because we had extensive dialogue about their industrial hygienists and safety people being here with the union. And I also know that the health, both health departments walked through. The Aleria Health Department went through there, and the County Health Department went through there, and I had understood that they also made some findings and recommendations that were accomplished. I'm not, I'm not getting that material, and I don't disagree with you, Commissioners, just, it's not a reluctance on my part. I, I was, it was indicating to me that material was out there, and I have not been able to put my hands on it for you. So if, if you think that further information, further testing needs to be done, then whatever the pleasure the Board is, I'm not trying to be resistant to that.
Well, I don't, I don't know how much they would charge, and I was hoping maybe Tom Kelly had something in his possession to do, to do that with, but he did recommend Chemtron, and I'm going to try to get ahold of them to see if, if they can come out and take a look for us.
Wouldn't a better place to start be with our own health department?
Well-
I don't know if they have the diagnostic tools to, to determine whether we have problems there or not.
I'm a little surprised that we don't have something from the health department in our files, because I know they were out there, too, because we had an issue with-
Did you make contact with them?
Not this time, okay? I, I made contact with the people that are over in the building, that I thought would have the materials. And there's a few notes on there, you can see that Sandy and I were going back and forth, you know, trying to get this information, because I thought there was a lot more available. I know the health department was out there, but whether they issued a report or not, I have not been able to find one. But it certainly can go anywhere the Board wants to go on this. We're, we're dealing with the issue by doing the engineering in the back, so we are doing physical preventative-
Yeah, we, we need to get the water out there, so we don't create mold, but if there's already mold in the building or something, we need to find out and, and rectify the situation.
I would suggest Chemtron gives us a proposal, they have to look over the facility for it, gives the price, I'm sure, so they have to give us a proposal.
And I think we follow up with our health district, too. And I think we follow up with our health district, too. If they've got something, let them give it to us. If they have the ability to go out and, and make an inspection, they should do that as well.
I would, I would just indicate that when, when, when the UAW was down from Detroit, because they represent the employees over there, there was, they were here for a few hours, and whatever they did, I know they brought an IH down, and they didn't find any problems in the building, or they would have pursued it further. I mean, they actually brought a small team down to walk through the building. So I'm still trying to figure out, did they issue anything? I know that they were satisfied when they left, because it was part of the boggern unit work. And maybe we can track that down further, too.
And what is an IH?
Industrial hygienist.
Thank you.
One last thing, since we're, we're not going to certify the assessments, and I talked to Mr. Seresen a few times this week. What, we're not going to have the assessments. Did we check to see if, how we would go about refunding those residents who overpaid on their assessments?
I think the commissioners can take action. And, you know, those, those residents, the problem, the problem is for, for the members of the audience, when these assessments were passed in previous years, additional assessments are limited to 10% of the initial cost of the improvement. And some of these assessments exceeded that by a few percentage points. The, the way that the assessments are, are collected, though, are through, are not through the city of Alaria, but are through tax, that goes on the tax bill. And before it goes on the tax bill, though, each property has, has to go through the formula that was established for the assessment in the first place. As I point out in the memo, you know, say that 13% was, 13% of the initial assessment was assessed for a particular year, that means that 3% should not have been and should, should be refunded to the particular district. But you have to go back then with each individual tax bill and find out how much of that 3% goes back to them. I'm sure it can be done. It's just not, not going to be as straightforward as people want to, you know, or might believe at first blush. So, yeah, the commissioners can refund that. I think that's the best way. You could either refund it or give credit for it. It works out the, the same way. And that money should, should come off of their next assessments.
But they won't, if we don't, we're not going forward with assessments, so it would have to be a refund, because if we go with the surcharge, it's going to come from Alaria. Who would do that? Would that be the auditor's office to, to figure out how much these people are owed back?
No, I believe the engineer's office could probably come up with the figures. They're the ones that, that have the frontage formula, the assessment formula.
When you work on the surcharge agreement, can you also look into that and make sure that gets done also?
Certainly.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Black?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Board Correspondence Number 13, there's reference made to a letter that the commissioners received from Mayor Smith of Avon, and he is citing five or six other mayors who have met, and they are experiencing problems with telephone and electric charges and how these relate to drawing and holding companies to their particular political subdivisions. And yesterday, I made mention of this letter to the Team Lorraine County meeting, and I supplied copies of that letter, both to the administrative assistant for Team Lorraine County and to representative from the electric company and to the Century Tel from Lorraine. So I'd just like to make mention of that. And Mayor Shapansky from Grafton is a member of Team Lorraine County, and she expanded a little bit on the comments in the letter. And secondly, I'd just like to commend Lori for meeting with Mayor Frank Jackson, but I want to know, did you come away with a commitment from Mayor Jackson to support the interchange?
Not exactly. He has, I think he wants to negotiate some items before he would commit, but that wasn't actually why. I went there to meet with him, but that subject did come up, and I didn't feel that was my battle to negotiate. So actually, I think he's going to sit down. He wants to sit down with Mayor Smith, and I think we're going to set that up, so maybe something good will come out of that.
Well, good, except that he's a voting member of Newwaka. Mayor Smith is not. So I'm, I'm looking to you for help. Your two fellow commissioners are looking to you for help.
Well, Valerie McCawd asked me to call Mayor Jackson, but you and I had that other meeting with Cuyahoga County, so I didn't get that done in this one.
That's fine, but I just, I just wanted to make sure where, where he was lighting on this issue, since the only time I've seen him is on television.
He wants, I think he wants to share a little bit and some revenue sharing and, and things like that.
That's not going to happen.
And he's got some, he's got some ideas of his own, which he's trying to protect Cleveland, of course, because that's who he represents, and I don't blame him there. But it's, that's for him and Mayor Smith to, to decide on, not myself.
Thank you.
Dennis, Commissioner? Again, Labor Fest is very nice. I could thank all our staff who showed up to work that day. I got there about quarter to 12, and everybody was there and spent through the day. Had a nice meeting with the governor prior to his appearance. Myself, Tony Kraschenko, got to speak with Mr. Strickland. I brought up your railway. He was asking what was important in Lorraine County. I told him the West Shore Railway. I told him about our jail issues. Were a major concern in capital dollars, and asking for a waiver that we might be able to put a temporary facility up versus spending $600,000 a year renting one.
Good.
So, who's in? Nice week.
He had a nice pink shirt on.
Yes, he did.
He looked pretty jazzy. I'll tell you, though, they talk so along my feet here. We stood there for an hour during all those speeches. An hour.
And I'll tell you what, Pat Gallagher has got the loudest clap I've ever, and he's standing right behind me, and I'm, I'm kind of short, so his clap was right in my ear. I thought it was going to be blown out by the end of the hour.
I'm using it on purpose.
[laughing].
Ms. Blair?
September 13th at noon will be the groundbreaking at the airport, and on the 15th, which is Saturday, from 11 to 5, will be the fust at the airport. What, Correspondents?
Will the reading be weighed?
Second discussion.
Ms. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Global comment?
Anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Forrest?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Dennis.
Morning, Dennis.
It's that time of the year again where the pigskins start falling out of the sky. I just wanted to announce the Lorraine's Annual Punt Passing Contest. It's going to be hosted at George Daniel Field on Saturday, September the 15th. And it's time that I enjoy spending with the youngsters to showcase their talents. They have one issue to challenge. They want to know which one of the two, Mr. Cordez and Mr. Kaloe can, how far they can throw a football, so maybe we...
Oh, me. I could probably throw farther than either of them two.
Well, in that case, we'll open it up to all the commissioners.
I know I can throw it further than Mr. Kaloe, because he has a bad shoulder. Use my other arm, you'll be all right.
All right, well, well, thank you.
Do you need somebody, you need somebody up there?
Well, we're, we're looking for, you know, donations and sponsorships, and also volunteers, because we're anticipating more kids.
Why don't you stop by and leave some information? And this is, that's this Saturday?
It's, uh, next, next Saturday.
Can you leave some information in?
Sure.
I'm sure we can...
What time again, Dennis?
It's, registration's at 12, and it starts at 1, 1:00 p.m.
We really appreciate all the time you take with all those young kids. You don't have any children of your own.
Uh, no, I don't.
So, all the, the children in, in the city of Lorraine are, are your children.
That's for sure.
Thank you for that.
September 15th is going to be a busy day. Marcy Capter is sponsoring an anti-war rally at 3:00 p.m. at Tappan Square in Oberlin. And there's another walk from Oberlin to Wellington that was just being sponsored in, in celebration 150 years. I can't believe nobody from Oberlin is going to get up and talk about that.
I guess it was next week.
Next week is too late. Come on down, David.
And I still think I can throw a football further than you. I played football with you in your backyard.
Were you not done, Dennis?
You what?
We just kept talking.
I played football with you in your backyard.
We want, we want a team that's one of you can throw the football the farthest.
Well, they're fighting among themselves.
Thank you.
I know, I'm going to try. Thank you, Dennis.
You know I am with a frisbee. Can you imagine me with a football?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Ashenhurst.
Thank you. I, I will take the opportunity to say lots going on in Oberlin on the 15th of September. We hope we'll see some of you for the walk from Oberlin to Wellington, which really kicks off the year for the 100, the next year is the 150th anniversary of the, the rescue of John Price, which took, he was taken from Oberlin down to Wellington, and later, he was taken back to Oberlin by a number of Oberlin and Wellington citizens. That route will be taken actually from, beginning at the Green Acres Facility at 6:30 in the morning. There's a lot of cooperation from Sheriff's Committee's Office and others in, in people walking down State Route 58, which is indeed where the rescuers went in, in getting him. And there'll be a reception at the other end in Wellington. I believe that's at 10 o'clock. Airport Fest is 11 to 5. We hope that some people who are participating in the festivities at the airport will also come to Oberlin at 3 o'clock. As, as you, as Commissioner Blair said, it is a, a major anti-war event, co-sponsored by the Community Peace Builders and Oberlin Peace Activist League, the Veterans for Peace. There's going to be a representative from Post 656 of the American Legion, and the center of it is Congresswoman Marcy Capter, whose title, as I understand it, is "End the War in Iraq and Avoid a War in Iran." So it's, a lot of people will be out for that, and we hope to see you, and we understand that there's a lot going on. So, but we'll, we'll certainly think that a lot of you are going to be hanging around Oberlin somewhere during the day on the 15th.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Commissioner Blair.
Let's ask for the walk for the breast cancer walk down to Cleveland.
The breast cancer walk also in Cleveland? Mr. Kobacher, nice to see you here. Hey, your 15 minutes of fame, want some time? No? Mr. Kobacher is a police officer in Wellington Village. I believe he's also running for mayor this year. So welcome to our meeting, Mr. Kobacher. No more public comment? Will we move into executive sessions outlined by the administrator and the county prosecutor?
One second.
Ms. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye. Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children aren't educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't, hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and, and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is, is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children. When you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know? Does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us. And we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Shapansky? We were going across the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, oh, woo. And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know? We'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast, and I'm fast, and we can run. And of course, they're, they're very enthusiastic. And no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signals stop, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and keep, continue to look both ways, because it's not safe. And they could fall. They could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And, and as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in, in kindergarten through fourth grade, some of those children are very small children. The, the main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever. It's way down there. But we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids. A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no, those kids are walking the wrong way. That's dangerous. I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without looking.
The second video, we show second, third, and fourth grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo. What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo. How come you dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Stepping Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated... They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So, he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So, they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children. We have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that, where we have, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we visited this year.
I think it was really nice, because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said, when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
Um, I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's, like, cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road, so you don't get hurt.
You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight.
If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to... If they don't know how to cross without sidewalks, I'll tell them how to do that, too, because that's what we learned.
Um, I think that it was good, because I didn't let you have to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder, and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids, if they don't know what to do, by crossing the road.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection. What happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to safety town, and they learn, "Look left, look right, look left again," and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did safety town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Asimo?" And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then, as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want. We can take a chance and run across the road. And I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs. We still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So, I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash." Litter lowers property values, and it's costly to clean up.
Keep Lorraine County beautiful. Put the lid on trash.
Every year in Lorraine County, hundreds of children are abused and neglected. Many are removed from their homes for their protection. Judges must decide their futures, but they need information to make these critical decisions. You can provide this information through Voices for Children. Volunteers are men and women from all walks of life with no special or legal background who work alongside attorneys, social workers, and other court employees. As an officer of the court, you find out as much as you can about the child. You will review records, interview parents and relatives, foster parents, talk to teachers, neighbors, and, most importantly, the child. When the volunteer has a complete profile, he or she appears in court to recommend what is best for the child's future. You've heard the statistics on child abuse. Now is your chance to do something about it. You don't need any special qualifications, only the desire to protect local children who desperately need your help. To become a special advocate or for more information on our next training session, call Voices for Children today.
A river runs through our land, but we don't often see this river, or understand how we affect it. It's a river with great power, power to change the face of where we live, our land, our economy, our health, and our children's future. We need to know this river, how our actions affect it, and how we can help protect it, because this river is ours. This river is the Black River. The Black River is making a comeback. After years of devastating pollution, the changes we've made have made a difference. Now is the time, and we are the people, to make more changes and to protect what's been gained for the entire Black River watershed. The Black River drew people here, and its life-giving water gave them a reason to stay, from early Indian tribes to the first white settlers. The Black River is also the reason we became a leader in agriculture and industry, and why our population and economy boomed with shipbuilding, steel, and automobile industries. Throughout much of the 1900s, the Black River was valued mainly for drainage and disposal and its access to Lake Erie. But for those who grew up along the banks of the river, it had a different value and holds many sweet memories.
I grew up on an old beach ridge in Lorraine County, on a tributary of the Black River, a very small tributary. And I spent, you know, all my time outdoors, playing in the water, watching the tadpoles, you know, realizing that things live in the habitat of the stream.
Well, I grew up on West River Road, which West River, or Black River, of course, passes through. And I spent a lifetime on, I guess you might say, on the Black River. And when we were growing up, we had a dock there behind our house. We had rowboat, you know, and that type of thing. Built a lot of rafts on the Black River, too.
But memories of the Black River changed dramatically.
The river, when I was a kid, was someplace where you wouldn't even go around to play, and someplace you were told by your parents to keep away from because of the dirtiness of it and the pollution. I remember even fishing wasn't a good idea. I remember the pictures of the carp with cancer pulled out all over them, and the different fish with, all deformed because of the different pollutions. So, I remember as a kid, it was a pretty rough area.
The Black River was a rough area, a river with seriously deformed fish, with water so contaminated, it was determined unsafe for swimming, or wading, or fishing.
The Black River used to be known as the River of Fish Tumors. In 1965, one of the county commissioners called the Black River the main sewer line to Lake Erie. It was one of the 43 most polluted river systems in the Great Lakes. It had horrible industrial legacy problems up near Lorraine, and it had always had problems with sediment, just because of the type of soils that we, that the Black River is located on.
The Black River 20 years ago was as bad as anywhere in the nation. It was on the same scale as the Cuyahoga River, and the Buffalo River, and the Detroit River, which were really just about as bad as you can get. So, it was one of the worst rivers in the country back then, especially due, as far as carcinogens, which is a...
Industrial pollution had taken a heavy toll on the river, and one sign that could not be ignored was the fish population. International fish expert Roger Toma has a long history of studying fish habitats and many years of testing on the Black River.
When we first came to the Black River, the first monitoring of the Black River by the Ohio EPA was 1982, there were areas in the river where there were no fish living. We could catch no fish. That's pretty dramatic. That's, that takes very extreme environmental conditions to eliminate every single fish. 20 years ago, there were parts of the Black River that were an open cesspool, that were running rife with raw sewage, that were devoid of life except for the most tolerant organisms that eat sewage, such as an insect referred to as a bloodworm, bacteria, and fungus. 20 years ago, the Black River was like a witch's brew of environmental problems and environmental insults. It was, I would characterize it as a dangerous river to be near.
Dangerous. That's the word used to describe a river that had once been rich in biodiversity, fish species, and animal life. It became a servant to industry and was nearly killed for it. April 2004, the progress has been remarkable. It was a major triumph when the Ohio Department of Health's 21-year advisory against swimming or wading in the lower Black River was finally lifted. At the same time, the river's status in regard to fish tumors was officially upgraded from impaired to in recovery. It was an event to celebrate, coming after years of change, including the closing of the U.S. Steel Coking Plant.
It's much better now, so much better. It's just almost unbelievable to those of us that were here early on. We had the coke plant closed down, which brought some improvement. And then, they did a dredging in 1990 to take out the worst of the contaminated muds and sediment in the river.
To tell the story of the Black River's recovery, look back in time. You get a sense of how the damage started and the changes that began to turn it all around. In the late 1800s and early 1900s, you see the U.S. Steel Plant and the American Shipbuilding Company begin to pour industrial waste into the river. You see the first sanitary sewers pumping directly into the river, causing an increase in typhoid. And for more than 70 years, you see little or no regulation of what was discharged into the Black River. When did change begin? After the Cuyahoga River caught fire and gained national attention. The first federal environmental regulation, the Clean Water Act, was enacted shortly after that. Then came the Ohio EPA doing extensive studies on the Black River. But even after the regulations, and dredging, and improved wastewater treatment, more needs to be done. Why? Because the problems are not just from pollutants being discharged into the river, the problems are throughout the land drained by the Black River, the area called the watershed. The Black River watershed includes the land drained by the east branch, the west branch, Plum Creek, French Creek, and the main stem of the river, where it empties into Lake Erie. To make real improvements, we needed to deal with the entire watershed on a grassroots level, to tell the people about what was happening and to make changes. And that's exactly what the Black River Remedial Action Plan was designed to do.
They couldn't just fix all the pipes, all the effluent coming from pipes. There had to be a change of mindset within the entire watershed. So, they developed the remedial action plans to try to get to, to the local level, to try to get to individuals' homes and municipalities, to try to get them to take charge, to take control of how their watershed is developed and what their watershed will look like in the next 10, 15, 20 years.
The Remedial Action Plan, known as RAP, has been a great success in teaching and involving the people of the watershed.
It really offended me to find out that there was supposedly a meeting about the river, and they claimed that no one showed up. And the plane dealer was saying that everyone out in the Black River area was apathetic. And it's like, well, wait a minute. It must have been one of those public meetings that you, you put in the fine print of the paper. If people really knew about the condition of the Black River, they would really turn out and support it. And that's what we found. We really found a lot of support. People just did not know what was going on with the river.
So, what was going on? The Black River was one of four Ohio rivers designated as an official "area of concern." But citizens on the RAP Committee determined that the entire watershed should be designated an area of concern. Why? Well, because we've had serious impairments to the beneficial uses that a river should provide, with fish that are not safe to eat, and public beaches not safe for swimming or even wading. It's true, we've made remarkable progress, but we've also uncovered new problems.
With the swimming advisory that had been lifted and the incidence of deformities in fish decreasing, I think those have really been good goals for the Black River and ones to really be celebrated. But I think with that, you know, it's, it's learning that there are other issues out there, because those were so highlighted for such a long time, that now it's really stepping up and getting excited and motivated about fixing some of the other problems that were a little bit hidden.
The hidden problems are the ones that aren't fixed by regulating or closing industries. They're called non-point sources of pollution.
I think the main problem is the non-point source issue. And when we say non-point source pollution, we mean those types of pollution that are not associated with a pipe coming out of a factory or, or a wastewater treatment plant, but actually the kind of runoff that comes off of streets, it comes off of your yard, it comes off of an agricultural setting, if you will, or a feedlot. And those kinds of quick runoffs can have great deal of impact on the watershed and the river, particularly as it relates to the fish, the nutrients, and of course, the habitat where the fish and the microorganisms live.
Simply put, if you can point to where the pollution is coming from, that would be a point source. Cleaning up point source problems are easy, because you can locate them. Cleaning up non-point source problems are more difficult, because it is so diverse, it is so watershed-wide.
Besides adding pollutants to the water, we're literally losing our land. The soil in our watershed is being washed away. That's why you often see the river looking muddy and brown. In areas of the upper Black River watershed, more than 20% of our land is eroding, at a rate of at least 5 tons per acre every year. The proof is in the picture. This is the mouth of the Black River before a rain, and this is the same place after a rain. What you see is a plume of sediment emptying into Lake Erie. What you see is the soil we're losing, over 17,000 acres eroding at excessive levels, with more than 80% of it crop land. To fix the problems in the Black River watershed, we need to understand how each of us may be causing the erosion and non-point pollution. First, take this little quiz. What percentage of the land in our Black River watershed is used for industrial purposes? Would you guess 25%, 15%, 10, or 1? How about agricultural? Maybe 20 or 30%? Or is it 40 or 50%? The truth is, only 1% of our watershed is truly industrial. Over half, 51%, is used for agriculture. Though it may be changing, our land use is still clearly dominated by farms. What about the rest of our land? What about the rest of our land? 38% is rural residential, 7% is urban residential, and 3% is used for commercial purposes. The more we understand how we impact the river and the land, the better we can address non-point pollution problems. We are the people of the Black River watershed. We are farmers, homeowners, developers, public officials, and students. We are the ones who can make a difference.
I think the problem with most homeowners is they really don't understand that what they do has an impact. I think they see one small or large property and feel they're just a small part of the big puzzle, and what they do really makes no difference. And I think somehow they need, I mean, we all need to understand more as individuals what an impact we really do have.
How do homeowners impact soil erosion and water quality? With our landscaping practices, septic systems, and chemicals used on lawns and flower beds.
If one person dumps a little fertilizer, a little chemical on his lawn, it's probably not a big deal to the, you know, to the water that comes out at the mouth of the Black River. But if 1,000 or 1,500 or all the other people on the same watershed do the same thing, it's a mammoth difference.
Home sewage treatment can also make a mammoth difference. In rural areas without sanitary sewer systems, each home treats sewage individually with underground septic tanks. These tanks were often installed as long ago as the 1930s and 40s. Even 20-year-old systems are overloaded with today's modern appliances like dishwashers. Many of our septic systems are now outdated and usually not maintained by homeowners.
They need to be pumped out periodically. There are motors in them, moving parts, aerators. Those need to be maintained, run properly, so that the water coming out on the clean side is in fact clean.
In many cases, that water coming out of the older septic systems is not clean, and that means human waste is going directly from our septic systems into the river.
The new homeowners, I don't think, impacted very much because all the sewage systems are on lot. In the old homes where these sewage systems aren't maintained properly, some of them have direct outlets to the river or to creeks and streams that go to the river, and they would cause a lot of untreated sewage or effluent to go there.
The general thought is, if my toilet flushes, then my system's working. But what is happening is the wastewater is going down our drains from our home into the tank, and the tank is discharging to a pipe, and the pipe is going to a stream that goes to the Black River that goes to Lake Erie, and it's basically a direct shot.
Septic systems aren't a priority to the homeowner until they back up or fail. Failing means that somewhere in your yard, you've got sewage, water, effluent bubbling out, and then they panic. Sometimes homeowners try to fix it themselves by taking a direct line to the creek or river. And of course, that's terrible, but there's just a lack of education, a lack of desire to know about it and do anything with it until it's a problem. And as long as there's not a density of them and they're spread out, it's not as bad. But you get into a highly developed area where the houses are close together, it would be much worse. Now, everything is concentrated on lot. Your sewage system is treated on lot and is disposed on lot, where it actually soaks into the ground by way of an ad grade system or a Wisconsin mound, which the sewage is pumped up into a large amount of sand and it filters down through it. So it never leaves your lot, and that way, it doesn't impact the river at all.
What's the solution for homeowners with old sewage treatment systems? They should maintain or upgrade what they have, and where it's possible, install sanitary sewers. Landscaping is another way homeowners impact our watershed. Just like farmers, homeowners need to plant riparian borders to hold soil in place along the edge of ponds, creeks, and the river itself. Planting grass right up to the edge of the water does not hold the soil in place. The roots are too shallow. And if nothing holds the soil in place, especially after a rain, the riverbank gets washed away. Besides erosion of the land and loss of soil, it also causes overload of sediment in the river. Nooks and crannies on the river bottom become blanketed with silt, and this literally suffocates the bugs that fish eat and can clog fish gills. So what can homeowners do? Well, these are simple rules for landscaping to protect our watershed. Plant trees and shrubs along the water's edge, not grass. Don't mow up to the riverbank. And don't dump grass clippings in the river. Some homeowners have even left natural areas on their property. Dane Adams wanted to attract birds and wildlife, but there's another benefit we can all share.
And so as water runoff in that area filters through the wetland and then drains out, the plants and the microhabitat there tend to filter that water and make it cleaner going into the river.
Working together, we can improve and protect our watershed. People from the townships and the cities, environmental groups, farmers, and homeowners are getting together to talk about the problems and share solutions on an advisory committee.
It's great to bring all of these players together at the table, which doesn't seem to happen a lot, that you get township trustees along with city people, along with concerned citizens. So you kind of run the gamut with concerns that are out there, and, you know, we don't want to be duplicating efforts.
The word is getting out that improving and protecting the Black River watershed demands voluntary effort, and in some cases, new regulations, such as how we handle stormwater in our communities.
The things that are important to us is certainly stormwater management, proper control and method of that. What takes place in the extreme southern part of Lorain County, a higher elevation, all of that stormwater flows down to places like Amherst and Lorain, and their development, if not handled properly in terms of the additional stormwater runoff, will cause flooding downstream towards the north here.
Too often in the past, one city would focus on their needs, and, for example, stormwater. And they thought the solution to the stormwater was to get the water away as soon as possible, as quickly as possible. When you do that, all you do is create headaches for the person downstream. You destroy habitat and you just transfer your problems to the community next door, and you're not being a good neighbor. So I think there needs to be a way where communities can communicate, can work together on stormwater problems, so they're not creating headaches for one another and costly headaches, really to save money overall.
In planning for new developments within municipalities and city officials must consider how much of that land is going to be covered by impervious surfaces. Impervious surfaces will not allow water to transfer down into the soil and be naturally cleansed.
City and township officials can also help bring about something new to many of us: recreational use of the Black River.
The amount of wood ducks and things that nest along it, and like I say, the raccoons, herons, the deer frequent it, cross it. It's beautiful, but as far as water sports or fishing, it's not used like rivers in other states or different places. Most people think the Black River is just a drainage, and it's not.
In the next 20 years, I think you're going to have a lot more recreational use of the Black River and Lake Erie. Hopefully, we will start having open space, public, accessible locations, so that public can come and look like we are here today at this beautiful scenery and to really enjoy the benefits of places like the Black River.
The future of the Black River watershed is in the hands of the young. Students need to understand the river and have the joy of going right to the water.
This has been the first year that I've been teaching that the warning has been lifted and it was okay, you know, to get into it. We've done the waders, et cetera, but a lot of them just like to just get in it. And that's the fun of it, you know, like really exploring it and looking around and seeing what they can see. Well, one of the first things I want them to understand is the concept of watershed and how, where they live in respect to that, that they are in the Black River watershed, et cetera. Elyria High School actually borders the river. We can see the river from our parking lot. And with some groups, like environmental groups, et cetera, we've gone down and we've seen like some of the activity, evidence of the activity. We've done cleanups, we've done water quality studies down at the river.
Some of us got waders, some of us just went in the water. And Ms. Wick is actually a really good teacher because she would sit there and she'd just point out all this stuff to us as a teenager. We always go up in the rocks, just hiking, everything. We go behind the falls and all that. But in ecology, we did learn a lot. I learned, like, people digging up dirt, it'll cause silt in the river, and then the fish will breathe it in, and that's a really big problem, especially with the Black River. The fish will breathe it in and then they'll just die.
I think that through the class, I actually learned more than I ever knew before because I always have been like interested in like being involved with like the environment, but I didn't really know a whole lot about it.
And I think it's cool because I think, especially for high school students, if you visibly learn, you know what I mean, like visually, it's, I think you soak it in better, you know what I mean? Like, you can be talking about it in the classroom, taking notes about it, but then when you come down here and she's sitting there and explaining things, like even the history.
Since you live here, you don't really think about it like as, it makes a difference if you keep around here clean too, you know? But then afterwards, I thought about that, like, when I go down here now, I like, I look at the trash and stuff and I think like that kind of thing, and we're keeping it clean around here.
I think if you learn more about it and you realize what it's doing to the river, then obviously you're going to stop. Like us, how much we learn, it makes you think twice about, like you said, just throwing something on the ground or just your everyday lifestyle. It really does make you change, makes you think.
There is a lot of gloom and doom environmental studies because humans have impacted the planet so greatly. But on the other hand, when they can see studies and they can actually, you know, see data about water quality, that things have changed. Lake Erie itself has changed tremendously in my lifetime. Then it gives them a reason to modify practices or to, you know, just live like good stewards of the earth because it can make a difference, and it does.
We are making a difference. After improvements to Elyria's wastewater collection system and upgrades at the Grafton Wastewater Treatment Plant, the U.S. EPA determined that organisms living at the bottom of the east branch of the Black River have fully recovered. We were the first remedial action plan in Ohio to show significant improvement, and now we're the first RAP on the U.S. side of the Great Lakes to completely restore an impairment in a portion of the watershed.
This shows the potential that the east branch can achieve. If the bottom-dwelling creatures, if the first rung on the food ladder can improve to such an extent that they're exceptional, they're considered exceptional, it shows the potential for the east branch to achieve great things, even in the fish habitat and other wildlife habitat around the sub watershed. The improvements are incredible, but we don't want to stop there. We want to keep going. But I don't think we're at that step yet where everybody realizes that their farm or their septic tank could be causing the river down here in Lorain to be a little more cloudy than the nice blue tones that we like to see here.
We must change our mindset. We must live responsibly. We must leave riparian corridors, little buffer systems along the watersheds. We must try to maintain our septic tanks. We must develop neighborhoods responsibly.
I think if people have personal contact, whether it's recreational or any other interactions with the river, that they have, definitely have a much closer connection and come to realize the impact of their actions on the watershed. Definitely, the out-of-sight, out-of-mind thing has got to go by the wayside. People really need to be reconnected and get it that they are a part of this whole picture.
We're all in this together, the people of the Black River watershed. This is our river. This is our responsibility.
Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover. She gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me and she will pull the covers back and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorain County kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work or anytime you come home, it's just always nice. They kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door and they wag in their tails and jumping on you, and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with this sad look, so it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around and I was like, oh my gosh, Lily's going to play now.
Yeah, like, sometimes, like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch, and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset, but we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play, and it brought us closer.